Okay. So already pray for confirmation. So, I am glad to welcome you to our town hall, a time where we decided we needed to share some of the exciting things that our session and our leadership have been up to, lo these many months. So I'm glad to welcome you here, and let's start with prayer. Our gracious God, we know your presence is here as we have been worshiping you this day, as we have been lifting up to you already, our prayers, the songs of our hearts, those things that we bring with you and with us. And so, we ask for your presence to remain, for your Holy Spirit to inspire, that we might share with one another our good foundations and our good future. In Christ's name we pray, amen. So I knew that Brian was going to be talking about gratitude, and I thought about that, and wow, am I grateful. I am super grateful for the leaders in our church, leaders who work tirelessly on behalf of the Kingdom of God, leaders who may have tried to say, "Oh, Lord, pick somebody else," but ultimately, who said, "Here I am." And in whatever way that you give to this church and give to the community, in ways that might seem small to you, or in big ways that feel exhausting at times, I am grateful. And glory is given to God. We have been on quite a ride together. We have gone and we have changed, and we have shared our joys and our fears, our glad hearts and our deepest despair, our hopes and our dreams and our failures and our losses. We have been through a lot together. From a home Bible study that started in the Harwell's living room, to a chartered church, through capital campaigns and construction projects, through earthquakes and droughts and fires. From the time that CHPC put down roots in this community, we have seen space shuttles launched into the starry skies. We watched the Berlin Wall come down. We braced for the fizzle of Y2K. We watched planes be turned into missiles on 9/11. We have experienced bull markets and economic crashes. MTV came and went, and in its place, Facebook, Twitter, and TikTok are poised to take over the digital world. We used to use landlines, now we have smartphones. We have been in transition, and that has produced transformation. Our strategic council of session dove deeply looking for where God was leading us, hoping there might be a playbook for who we are being called to be. There is not. Instead, we learned that many churches are looking to us to lead the way. So we buckled down, and our leadership and our membership have been at work, living into this challenging season in our world and our society, in our communities and in the church. In community with one another, the session has been studying Scripture, praying together, listening to the congregation, examining resources, assessing data and experiences, and seeking the wisdom that comes from a steadfast and loving Creator, while looking to the example of Jesus Christ and relying on the guidance of the Holy Spirit. In our work, we confirmed what we knew. God has a plan. God always has a plan. And while it may seem like the church is dying, it is not. The church is transforming. We cannot see all that God sees, but we are confident in God's grace. We also know that while traditional membership in churches is declining, many, many people identify as spiritual, with a desire to become more spiritual. They want to make a difference in their communities and contribute to the greater good of the world. Matthew's Gospel reminds us what Jesus told his disciples and is telling us as disciples today. It says this, "When he saw the crowds, he had compassion for them, because they were harassed and helpless like sheep without a shepherd. Then he said to his disciples, 'The harvest is plentiful, but the laborers are few. Therefore asked the Lord of the harvest to send out laborers into the field.'" We know there have been challenges, but we also know there are opportunities. We see the opportunity to stand in the gap of division and suspicion, and we see the opportunity to renew the faithful desires and spirits of those who have provided a legacy of faith. Our foundation is sure. While we were moving back into our renovated office spaces, I found a brochure from 1985. It was from one of the first capital campaigns of this church. It was called "A Step Forward in Faith." In the brochure, the hopes of the members of CHPC were expressed. Their desire was to build a base for common ministry, for our time, and for the generations that are yet to be. The brochure states, "Because we know we matter to God, others matter to us." Our hope includes buildings and programs and dreams and a place we can call home. But these are not our true hopes. These are simply expressions of the one great hope we have in Jesus Christ, to be and become that church. We hope to grow in faith, to love one another, to provide opportunity to care, to be a family at worship together, to serve in Christ's world, to call men and women and children to faith. I'd like to invite Rob McMillan to share more.
Added to us by many here today, the session, as well as other church leaders, have been talking about ways we can build upon that foundation. And in the future, as we go forward, you may hear us refer to them as our three pillars. Now, before we get into the three pillars, a quick example that might make you understand this a little bit easier. For those who don't know, back in my college days, I worked part-time at Disneyland as a sweeper. Now, before they would give me my pan and broom, I had to go to something called the Disney University. Bottom line, they taught us about the four keys to success. And in the Disney world, those were safety, courtesy, show, and efficiency. And the bottom line was, from when you clocked in till when you clocked out, if everything you did sort of had those keys in mind, then you were going to have what they would think would be a successful working day. So, as we transform, we have discussed our three pillars, and I want to go over those three pillars with you. Think of them as, not adjectives, but callings. The first is open doors. We have a responsibility to provide radical hospitality to the people of this world. This is where we build bridges and reflect the welcoming love of God in the world. Both the Old and New Testaments implore the people of God to be about welcome and hospitality. Deuteronomy, chapter 10, verse 19, says, "You shall also love the stranger, for you were strangers in the land of Egypt." And Hebrews 13, verses 1 and 2, "Let mutual love continue. Do not neglect to show hospitality to strangers, for by doing that, some have entertained angels without knowing it." So as we seek to open doors, think less religious social club, more welcoming to those in the community and those who may be different. The second pillar is foster faith. This is where and how we grow closer to God and to our fellow Christians. 1 Corinthians 12 teaches us that there is no such thing as a Christian outside a church, any more than the church is anything but the people that make it up. Fostering faith means that we are growing in our own personal faith, but also as a community of faith. These two components are inseparable, and I keep going back to one of the themes in Lisa's sermons, I think it was back in June, prayer. Make it more about prayer. And prayer comes in all shapes and forms, music, silent prayer, personal prayer. The third pillar is engage needs. Jesus once said, "When I was hungry, you fed me. When I was naked, you clothed me. What you did for the least of these, you do for me." There is no mistaking these words of Jesus. They are abundantly clear. Our service to Jesus is performed as service to the people of the world, feeding them, clothing them, encouraging them, validating them, and affirming their word as children of God. There is no one too lowly, none too shameful, none too far gone down the path of sin. We serve Jesus by serving others, and in the process of seeking out those who are in need. At our last leadership summit in August, the session voted to move towards something called transformational change, and adopt these three pillars of identity, as we look to the future of our congregation and how we will share the good news of Jesus Christ with our neighbors. We are looking forward to engaging the church in building upon the foundations of our faith. So as we embrace this transformational nature, remember that we do so because lives are transformed through the grace of God and gospel of Jesus Christ. We are setting out to travel a renewed path together, with a willingness to try new things, while seeking ways to present Christ in our community and create opportunities to go out and invite in those who are looking for answers to some of their deepest questions. Remember, if we are serious about innovation and doing different things to adopt these pillars in our everyday lives, when we're here at church, when we're not at church, realize that yes, we got to give ourselves some room to fail. And we're going to fail, and we're going to fall, but as that happens, think about whether or not the fall is a fall upward, so that in the process, we develop a church that is not only identifying the needs in our neighborhoods and the places we live, but also the ways to address those needs in ways that align with the calling of our church. Thank you. Phil?
All right. Lisa's known me long enough that she gave me things to read, and, because you don't want to be here till 3 o'clock. Yeah, I just put the slides up there. I got some things to say, got some things to read. One of the things we did as a session and as a leadership group, at one point, is we read an article that suggested that maybe we hadn't failed enough. That our problems that we experience in institutions is that we haven't failed enough. Because when we fail, it's because we tried something, right? What's the old adage that you miss every pitch you don't swing at? Right? You got to be able to take a strike, got to go, give it a try. So, what I got written here is a great example of our current innovation with the freedom to fail and learn from the experiences, our new prayers@canyonhillspc.org project. As a session was in its generative phase of planning, we were encouraged by suggestions about the power of prayer in a little book called "Post Quarantine Church." So encouraged, in fact, that a group from Outreach Committee, that would be my committee if you didn't know, implemented an outreach program with prayer as its focus, writing hundreds of letters to the community, sharing our desire to pray for and with them. Now, I don't want you to think I did that. There are a couple individuals in here that did hundreds, that's not dozens, that's hundreds of letters, and they were hand-signed and sent to the community. People we didn't know, people we bought names from, a demographic we thought could be a benefit from our outreach. We've all seen the power of prayer within our church. We want to help them by showing them the power of prayer. We don't need to know them personally yet. The results were mixed, not exactly what we expected. We thought there would be lots of opportunities to pray for people we didn't know. We put together our website, our email address, prayers@canyonhillspc.org, and we could accept your prayers and get them in a list and get them to deacons and get them out on a Sunday. We invited people to come and see it on Sundays. And it's worked sometimes, but it's an effort, and we're learning, and we're getting better at it. And just because it's not working 100%, doesn't mean that prayer doesn't work. And it doesn't mean it's an effort that should be abandoned. It's part of the evolution of what we're doing. We are a prayerful people. So, the mixed results led to the 72-hour prayer vigil that Lisa did, that she had in June, and our continued outreach with our email prayer hotline. From these lessons will come more innovation and more areas of prayer. Now, this section was going to either be me or Rob, but I won the draw. And so, I'm going to talk about the reorganization of session. Our session has taken steps to restructure itself from separate committees to collaborative teams with elders serving as partners with their team members, all right? When my friends who don't know how to spell Presbyterian and don't know who we are, ask me what Presbyterian is, my most common flippant response is it's religion by committee, with hot dish. But there's a lot of structural problems with a bunch of committees. Whose committee does this fall into? Have we done the appropriate procedure before we get anything done? And we can focus on all this committee-centric stuff, you know? Please, dear God, don't make it part of my committee. And I think that distracts from the work of God. So I'm proud of our strategic council. I'm proud of what we've been working towards to change, to evolve into collaborative teams, not individual committees. So, there should be a slide that says connections, and that doesn't mean the internet connection. That means a combination which was previously fellowship and outreach. So that's Rob and me right now. But fellowship is the people who are already here, and outreach are the people who aren't here yet. And why not do the same thing and try to be collaborative and reach out to our community, both internal and external? Another team is spiritual formation, Programs for Personal and Community Faith Development for All Ages. So, the next bullet I have is Worship Arts. Now, that's a big project in and of itself. It's planning and engagements of worship and special services. Mission and community service, identifying needs and providing opportunities for service to meet those needs. But why is mission, or why was mission, any different than community service? People tend to think community is just the local community, and mission is out there, far, far away, Rwanda, Mexico, wherever. But it's all the same community we're called to serve. Development and nominations, leadership development and nominations, oversight of communications and stewardship, big commitment right there, and then operations, business administration, property management, and human resources. Finally, we reorganized, what's it, we recognized, pardon me, that's the word I'm supposed to say. Finally, we recognized that we are blessed with a fabulous church campus, facilities that can be shared with the community. We are looking forward to hosting a fantastic open house event for our church, inviting the community with our gratitude when our elevators are complete and certified for operations. All right. Lisa, that's you.
So, this is a time where if you have questions, I would like to field them or avoid them. Renee? Communications falls, wait, I got to look. It falls under development and nominations. It actually moved to a staff responsibility, Katie, and they oversee that. Any other questions? That's what I'm going to get to on the construction update. So thank you for leading me into that. All right, construction update. So, status on the elevator, ad line. Well, first, let me back up. So, we've had a huge construction project. I am so glad that Jerry's back from vacation in here too, because I want to recognize some of the people that have worked really, really hard. But as you know, our fellowship hall is completed, our offices downstairs, the renovation is completed, and so, all that's wonderful. And just before Jerry went on vacation, we closed the insurance claim, right? Yay! And that was a Herculean effort, and I know Jerry went toe-to-toe for us all the time faithfully, just in there with the insurance, and thank you so much for all that you did, because it provided us resources. It provided the resources to be able to build the building that Doug Brown conceived of and was the architect for, so that we could have this fabulous space. And so, there are other people, Bruce Kidd, who's sitting two people up. Bruce Kidd, we gave the title of, what was it, owner representative. What he really was, is the general contractor that oversaw all the rest of the GCs and subcontractors. And when they were like getting a little behind, oh, Bruce was on them. And without Bruce doggedly managing this entire project, wow, we would have been sunk. So thank you, Bruce. Pete Lapsich has been faithfully leading our ragtag ad hoc committee, making sure that we pay attention to the details, even when we're so tired we don't want to. But Pete keeps us right on track, looks at the questions, "Oh, don't look at that. No, it's okay." But he makes us face some of those things so that we could do a really quality project. So Pete, thank you. Vanessa Bates was holding the purse strings for us, making sure that every nickel that went out was inspected first before it went. And so, as you know, we had an insurance claim that paid for a lot of the renovation that we did with our fellowship hall. But there were some gaps, because we wanted to make some changes, some tenant improvements that the insurance company said, "Oh, I don't think that's in your policy." But it was the time, right? When you're gutted, that's the time to make those changes. And so, we were able to do that. We knew we had the elevator that was still coming on, and we had some reserves. We had some physical plant reserves that we went to, to try to make this possible. But we also went and were offered a loan by PILP at a ridiculously low interest rate, to cover some of the things like green technology and for access, because our elevator increases our access to our property. And, so, we don't have those kind of boundaries. And so, we were able to do that as well, to be able to make this project possible. So, Jim Boganreef has been our strategic guy on so many levels, making sure that we're asking the right questions, making sure that we're looking into the future far enough when we are making decisions. And so, for Vanessa and for Jim, we are also so grateful for what you've done for us. And I know I kind of ran over Doug Brown, because he's not here, but he was our architect and dreamer, and so, and Christina would help us like Feng Shui things, so that was great. We had other people, operational in all of this, trying to make sure that we had things together. Kathy Diala comes to mind, Laura Kidd, who, oh my Lord, all the things that she had to keep filed straight, copies of, going over, re-invoicing, all of that. Lord, we would not have been able to do this if we did not have somebody as bright and wonderful as her in our business administration. So, again, grateful for Laura, for Kathy, for Doug, for all these people that have made this possible. So thank you. So our brief update is this, fellowship hall, obviously done, office is done. If you've not been down to our offices, I'm going down later. You can come see them, they're beautiful. And our elevator. So, Bruce is back in town, woo! I tried to hold them to their schedule while he was gone, but I was not as effective. So, what I understand is, we are very, very close to our state inspection. Once the state has come out to inspect and certify us, then we can also move on then to the city inspection, which is for the rest of the building. And once we pass all of that, then we will have certificates in hand, and we will be able to utilize our storage and our elevator, and we will be fully open and complete with these construction projects. Yay! Bruce, do you have anything to add to that? Right, I tried. So, yeah. So, we're that close. We're just that. But I looked up the theory of like having to infinity. It feels like we keep, you know, like in football, when the penalty is half the distance to the goal, you know, and then they take another penalty and it's another half the distance. You could half the distance to the goal to like forever until finally, the football's actually touching the goal line, right? So, it feels like at this end part of the elevator, it's like we're half the distance to the goal, half the distance to the goal, half, and like, eventually, we got to cross that goal line, and we will. So, but I'm grateful for the people that have been working on that. Pete Lapsich has also taken under, as a special project, the rehabilitation of our landscape. And so, he is working closely with Mission Landscape, who are landscapers right now, trying to rehabilitate some plants and vegetation that we lost during the construction. So Pete, thank you for that extra. Once we have all that together, the elevator certified, ready to use, we will pick a date that we want to have a big open house for the community. Not just big open house for Canyon Hills, peeps to come and like see everything again, but we want to open it up to the community. We want the community to know that we have fantastic facilities that they can use as well, that they can make useful for whatever endeavors they have as well, so that we are really ingrained and part of this community. So that's our goal and our hope. Any questions about construction? All right, Matt?
All of the things we do, we do for the glory of God, because we are the people of God. Amen is right. And we turn back to God, and we acknowledge that we are people that are flawed and imperfect and incomplete, but that God is rebuilding us. And so, as we rebuild the pillars of the church, as we move forward into the future generations, we know that God goes before us, and that it is the mercy and love and grace of God for us, shown to the world, that's the reason why we exist. So let us go to our God and close this time together in prayer. So let us go to our God and close this time together in prayer. Lord, you are the head of the church. Your Son is the reason why we gather. Your Spirit is the power that draws us together, binds us into one body with one Lord. And Lord, we know that all the things that we do in this world are simply a manifestation of your kingdom breaking through the veil. Lord, we know that we have an important and irreplaceable part to play, that without us, it can't happen. And so, Lord, I ask, I ask that you strengthen us, that you knit us together, that you give us the courage, the devotion and the discipline to move forward into new and uncharted waters, Lord, but let us see, like the writer of Isaiah says, "Streams flowing in the desert, a new road appearing in the wilderness." All of the newness, the new things that are happening through the Spirit, Lord, help us perceive them and see them. Lord, it is with amazement that we will walk through these coming days. It is with hope and expectation at the work of your Spirit that we will look for you in these places and in the faces of the people that we come together to serve alongside. Lord, remind us to be grateful. Guide us with humility and compassion, acknowledging that all the things that we have come from you. And Lord, help us to give those things back to you in kind. Lord, it is in your name that we pray. All right, that's the conclusion of our meeting.